Good evening, this is a calling to being to order, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in the Selectmen's Office on March 18th, 2024. The meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Kristen Rivers of the Wilberham Hampton Times is.
Yeah, these are two.
Thank you. This evening, we have a couple of things, we have a public hearing on a pole position, but then the Selectmen will be, for lack of a better term, leaving this office for a few minutes to go down to the Advisory Committee hearing.
They're wanting to come up here.
They're coming here? Oh, good, they're gonna come here, okay.
Keep it on Zoom.
All right, go, keep it on Zoom, good, okay.
That's why the cookies are there, Doug.
Oh, I see, oh, I thought they were for me, okay. The first item on the agenda is the minutes, Executive Session of January 2nd, 2024. This was to discuss collective bargaining.
January 2nd, 2024, I make a motion to push this off for further review.
This is the first.
Oh, you want the first one?
The first one is good.
There's two parts of the meeting, right?
Three parts, three parts.
Three parts.
Motion to approve.
Part one?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number two?
No, no, it's funny, so, so now we have to vote whether or not we release the minutes of the Executive Session to review, the minutes of the Executive Session. At some point?
At some point.
When does it end?
It doesn't.
Nice.
All right.
All right, number two.
This is number two.
Make a motion to approve that without release. At this point. Until we haven't got a signature.
All in favor? What?
We haven't got a signature yet, have we?
No. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Make a motion to, pause number three.
Number three, we're gonna put off because there's some corrections we have to make there, I'm gonna give them to Lauren.
Yeah, no accident.
And then Executive Sessions of January 29th, 2024, this is also regarding police negotiations.
Do you feel this one's fairly accurate?
Yeah.
So this really, a lot of this was explaining their positions on different things.
Right.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve without release.
Okay.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Executive Session Minutes of February 12th, 24, this is also police negotiations.
Yeah, basically on that first line, and Mark's saying we're approving now, just, almost should be like, Don Deppor is reporting back on his meeting, you know, that type of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Lauren?
This all comes from, basically, yeah, yeah. At the, at the end, I don't see a thing, so, was it basically authorized the Selectmen, the Chair, to bring the board's position back to the Union?
Yes.
Would you say that should be in there?
Yeah.
I figure that should be consistent with actually any of these, yeah. Make a motion to approve those changes without release.
Should this line be in there?
Which line?
Yeah.
Yeah?
This one here. This one here.
It's an opinion, but, yeah, okay.
Boy, that's, there's an opinion in this, yeah.
The Chief's opinion? So...
Actually, it's not even an opinion, it's actually his job to do it, so, he's reporting back facts.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I wasn't sure if we're leaving that in negotiations.
So we got a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there... The next item on our agenda is a public hearing under Chapter 166 regarding a pole position, is the National Grid of Verizon representative on?
Yes, Kyle Jewer is here representing National Grid.
Hi, Kyle, how are you?
Doing good this evening, how are you?
All right, good, what's up?
So this is part of, I was actually there about a month and a half, two months ago, discussing the underground crossing Allen Street at the intersection. This is just a single pole location that's required as part of this job to support pole loading analysis. It's right in front of the Bethlehem, the Bethlehem Church. But, in front of the trees, it'll be three or four feet off of the roadway, and it's, it's just simply to support, you know, one of the utility poles along Allen Street.
So it's not a new utility pole, it's actually just a support pole?
It, it is a new utility pole across the street to support the current one standing, the whole line currently goes along the east side of Allen Street. This one will be on the west side, there'll be guying support across, span guy to this pole to support the pole currently existing on the east side.
So it's a stub pole?
Yes, exactly, yep.
So the pole that you're putting on the west side is just guying across the pole on the east side?
Correct.
So it's not a pole with power, that's why I said?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's a support pole only, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I must have misheard your question.
It's a new pole, but not a new service pole, right?
Right.
Yes, yes.
So it's gonna be directly across the street with a guy wire running above to support the pole on the other side?
Yes.
Is there, is the pole compromised that it's gonna be supporting, or is it, is that, I mean, assuming that's supporting it, I mean, something's wrong with the pole?
No, so there's an additional circuit going on top of the whole line on the east side of the road. It's just needed for, for the support of the new circuit, really.
And why are other poles not needed for this type of support?
This one has a slight angle and there's a couple services on it, just the loading analysis that we do on the double circuit poles, we, we hold them to a higher standard because they're more critical.
Right, but I guess the question is, since you're replacing so many other poles on Allen Street, why not just replace this pole and, rather than, and make it, I guess you saw a slight bend to it?
Yeah, yeah, again, there's a slight angle, I mean, we, we run pole loading analysis on, on all of these double circuit poles, along with the two services coming off of it, it just causes this particular one to fail, and, you know, we need the additional support for it.
So Kyle, what, what do you know about double poles?
Quite, I, I know, I know enough to know what you're gonna ask.
What, what am I gonna ask?
You know, when are all those double poles going to be removed as part of this job?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have, they have, they have a backlog of 50 in town, there's probably another 50 here, so it's like 100 double poles. And I sent a letter, we sent an email to National Grid and to Verizon, and neither one had the courtesy to respond. So, you know, I'm gonna probably be petty and vote against this one, but do you have something to show?
That is not you.
I wanna put something on the screen, okay? Can I share with you?
Yeah.
Sure thing. Hold on one second.
Okay, hold on, just give us a second here.
You can guess what it is, Kyle.
So Kyle, just curiosity, if, if this doesn't pass, what's your next course of action?
It would be to look for, I guess, support in the opposite direction, you know, which, which may require an easement, it's right in front of, you know, right on someone's property. You know, I think this, this was the most straightforward, appropriate way to, to guy the pole, but, yes, I do see these, yeah.
See what we have here, see, they got one there that's six inches off the base, dangling in free air, being held up, I assume, but you guys can sit over here, you can sit over there. Like, I assume, being held up by the wires, and you got, most of them are like on the right hand, my right hand side there, the one that's on the, on the braces there, and some of those braces have already moved, so, we're a little concerned. A, we didn't get a response, at least the courtesy of saying, and I understand you have this whole system called dungeons where they're supposed to do it progressive and all that type of thing.
Right.
But I would like to be kept up to date when they tend to move it, who's, who's next online, because after National Grid does their thing, I have no problem harassing Verizon or, or Spectrum Cable to get their thing done. Because, two things, number one, they're dangerous, number two, they're on a main street, and I think the people pay enough money in rates to National Grid and Verizon and, and Spectrum that, you know, we could at least take care of this in an expeditious manner, at least they could, at least with what the law says, which is 90 days. But that one that's floating in air, the mystery pole, is quite interesting, so...
Yeah.
Just wanna feedback on that for a second, that there was reports, you know, of power outages and cable interruptions within that area where all that, all that infrastructure is being replaced. Today, for instance, there was a momentary, I don't know how long it was, but there was a power outage which set off fire alarms in the building. So, I mean, there's a little bit going on over there, that might be...
Along Allen Street?
Inside the scope of the work, yes.
Yeah, so, um...
Hey Kyle, can I, can I, can I jump in for a second?
Absolutely.
Hi, this is Lisa Jazinski, I'm also with National Grid, and I'm act, I'm, I'm local, I used to actually work in the town of Hampton quite a bit, but I'm more in the Northampton area now. If, if you sent me that email that you sent to National Grid, if you could send it to me directly so I could make sure somebody does get back to you about those double poles? I mean, there's usually a lot going on, if there is a pole set, typically, I can't see the top of it, typically, electric or National Grid's wires are already transformed, transferred over.
I believe National Grid wires are transferred.
Yeah, because we transfer and then we cut that old pole down so that the next, you know, the next utilities can. So, but I could at least have somebody get back to you if I gave you my email and you could just send it to me directly.
Okay, Lisa, why don't you do this? Oh, okay, I don't want, I don't want you to give it on the thing, because you'll get a million emails from everybody. We have, we have so many viewers, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, 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 I understand.
Don was actually the town ham influencer, that's what he was.
Yeah, she actually...
So Lauren has it, and I'll, I'll send it to you later on this evening.
Yes, Lauren, I heard from Lauren today, so that would be great, Lauren, if you could send that to me.
You may get it at, you may get it at 2:00 in the morning, so...
Okay, yeah. That's fine, I, I'll be looking forward anyway, it comes through, it comes through as Selectmen, and that always, that's always a good flag for us. The other thing too is, I know that he's talking about, you know, what's your alternative if you don't put in the stub pole? It's, it is, it's difficult to find locations when you have any angle on a pole, it, it really tweaks a pole quite a bit, it, it just pulls it quite a bit, and if you've got a double circuit on it, and the way electrics go, and we need more and more, I don't, you, you know what I mean, I know that we're gonna have to be working diligently with a lot of towns because everything is going electric and we need to bring in more power. It, I think that Kyle was also talking about that if they had to find another way, you know, then we, then we look at a push brace, because say, say the, say the wires, the angle shows that it's pulling that pole towards the house, that house number 132 or whatever's there, we don't want it coming over in that direction, a simple stub pole will hold it up. The other option, if the stub pole doesn't go up, then you have to brace it with a pole at, at a diagonal to hold the pole, which is, it's not the best. It's aesthetically, it's not very good, and it would be more towards a, you know, residential home, too.
All right. And you've notified all the butters and everything, is there anyone here on, or on Zoom that has any comments? All right, a motion?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the pole permit requested by National Grid for, basically, what was it, 132 Allen Street, is that what she said? For a support pole to be installed approximately 830 feet southeast of the centralized intersection of Pinewood Road and Allen Street.
How far off the road does that stub pole go, since it means spanning the road, is it gonna be just that two foot mark there?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's three feet off the road, tried to give it a little more space in the poles on the other side.
I'm looking, I'm just gonna have a map. What's the pole number offhand?
Is that the 24 down 84?
24?
It says 24.
Yes, yeah, right.
So it's right at the end of their driveway there? Got a transformer on the pole, the wires, I'll second John's motion.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
No, I don't wanna say, I appreciate you, you're making a point here and looking out for this, you know, I know you have to do it by your conscience, but this is a pretty normal request.
All in favor?
I almost made you some cheese.
Really?
All right, two to one, you got it, I'll send you an email.
Thank you very much.
I already have it, but thank you, have a good night, folks.
Oh, Lauren already sent it? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
One by the police station, perfect. All right, what do we, what do we have to sign here? Lauren, we have to sign this?
Yes, I think it's the third page.
There you are.
Nope.
That's them.
There's like four or five lines. Yeah, right there.
I'll sign it too.
Just because the vote, I mean, you're signing any of it.
So we never want copies.
That's what the, you know, the board voted, so, sorry.
Seven, seven, seven copies.
Excuse me, would you be teacher's helper and give this to Lauren? Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
All right, you ready? We have the Advisory Committee here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for stopping by.
Yeah, it's always nice to be invited.
All right, well, how you wanna do this?
Well, why don't you take your budget from the top down, so we can get it?
Hold it, she's making copies for everybody. Thank you, Lauren.
Now, if you, are there any, any changes in terms of hours in the salary lines here?
No.
Yes.
Oh, well, there's gonna be changes in...
Well, I think we have the, although this reflects, we talked about increasing the hours for the admin assistant.
Right.
So what, 32?
Well, so it's...
35.
35, I'm sorry, from 32 to 35. For which town?
The, the, the administrator's.
You have a lot of increases in hours, in your, yeah, a lot.
We do.
Everybody's got lots of increases.
We do.
Let's take them one at a time here, so, the, so we're talking the, the second line?
Second line.
It's 35... That's the, it's backwards there, that's rate and hours on the thing. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so that's an increase of two and a half hours? Is that right? No, so it's 35, 22, or 30 hours, and we're looking for 35 hours, correct? So it's a five hour increase. There is a bit of a question, obviously, for Board Health Coordinator, as, you know, we anticipate a new person being hired, and there's no guarantee the rate will be close to what, obviously, Jane, with the years of service, it'd be at a higher step, so... There's a possibility that could be a lower number, I would think, depending on the experience level of whoever gets hired. What was the timeframe in terms of filling that position? I believe in today's conversation, she reminded me she had 62 days left.
We've posted, we've posted, so...
So, so you may well have a number, a specific number for town admin?
It might.
We might, I mean, we're gonna be, obviously hiring, but...
Town Administrator, so we've gone to four, 30, 35, is it 30, 40 hours, full time, we're going to full time. And so it's 130, that's we put it over there, that's the going rate for town administrators in the area, I don't know.
I think if you actually go back to, Doug, you remember recall that I think Marion, her, last year here, was talking about, she felt 130 was the number we should be looking for back then, before Bob came on.
Keeps us competitive in the market in the area.
I think 125 was the number. She was acknowledging back, that was four or five years ago, so...
So, property and liability.
Readings from Jane and Lauren on that.
I have a, I have a question about that too, because we've, we've, I had Lauren check today, and we've paid, we're all paid up.
It's all funded, yeah.
Right, so, so essentially, if it's 152, 390, that's a 21% increase by the insurance company, you know?
Well, you've, it said increase for adding vehicles in the notes and comments under property and liability, so...
Yeah, 21% though.
I don't know, I was gonna ask you what vehicles are being added to it, do you know?
I think there's a big change.
The cost of vehicles, if property and liability have gone up substantially the last couple of years, so, you know, there's, I think there's one extra vehicle on the payroll.
We have a, we have an exported house here. Last year, we turned back 7,700 unused. And so you want a 21% increase?
This is what they're...
That's what they're telling us.
Yeah, they're telling us, insurance.
And I, I...
Not me anymore.
No.
Well, I, I hesitate to characterize it as a 21% increase, they said there was an eight to 10% increase, and they added that to the appropriated amount, not the expended amount. So if you look at the 166 to 185, I think it's not exactly 20%.
About 12.
Which is more in line, right, I mean, it's low.
But, 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 the point is, we didn't spend it all last year, and we're not spending it all this year, so, why are we, so we might need to adjust that down.
I think also with the new vehicles, obviously, we know insurance on newer vehicles is higher when we trade in a new pickup truck or dump truck, etc., so... Do those policies, do the, do they expire, you know, same as our fiscal year?
Yes, their fiscal year policies.
So that all lines up? Employee benefits, that looks like a very round number. Yeah, Dick had told us, I think, we're looking at a pretty flat increase on the insurance.
Well, yeah, but that's a very small piece of it.
I understand, but of course, since we're gonna be having pay raises in there, the insurance number will go up because of the number of...
Well, the benefits number will go, we need a COLA before we can do a better job.
I understand that, but that will mean an increase in employee benefits, because the...
Employee benefits, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what I said.
But since we don't know what that is, you know, we also do have a couple of retirements, which will impact buyouts, one in highway and obviously Jane's as well. Have those buyout figures been included in this number? Yeah, we had the, we had both of them, so, but again, since the COLA was unknown and the impact, you know, but I do remember the fact that the insurance number came in flat, so that was...
I don't know where that number came from, I haven't given you a number yet, I have, I have a lot of calculations waiting for the COLA, because even the buyouts are affected by the COLA.
Right, but Mark said he got a number from you, at the current rate, this would be what?
At the current rate, right.
Right.
So that's, yeah, I don't know where this number came from, Don, to answer your question, but I'm halfway through the couch, as soon as I have a COLA, I can finish my guess, and you can see if we agree. All right. Employment's the same, longevity, lawn claims are, we've been, we've been pretty good boys this year, so... Selectment expenses, the same, advertising the same, mapping the same, temp help, same.
If I can go back to slugging expense, you might say, my gosh, it's 20,000 you spent too, but that is the only account that gives us any flexibility to handle something. We had a request from the seniors and a building committee for some potential wetland mapping for their expansion, and that would have been the only place we could have touched it from, from what I think we talked about at the meeting. Fortunately, we didn't. Fortunately, we didn't need it, but it would have been if they had come forward, yeah. So you've got, that's basically a discretionary account. Exactly, yeah.
Stormwater management, that's the MS4 stuff, and that's tying bonds for veterans, same, Academy Hall.
Before we leave, is that number from Time Barn?
Yeah, that's their, that's their...
So they're holding the same number?
They're holding the same number.
Does that mean it was overpriced this year or underpriced going forward? I think there's different things that happen to our beat.
Yeah, it depends, there's different things that's required, so...
John may know, but it's not by building it all at once, yeah. That's a very fair figure.
Veterans benefits, Academy Hall.
We underbudgeted that last year.
Yeah.
We underbudgeted that.
Underbudgeted that last year, yeah. Transportation testing, this is the...
This is the PFAS.
This is the croaker, this is the PFAS and everything else they want. PDEP mandate.
Yeah, they added nine more homes to the testing.
And what used to be yearly testing is now gone to quarterly testing because of certain detections. No way around it.
Tip of the iceberg at this point. And, and the PFAS has been detected?
Low, low levels under the threshold were detected.
Under the current threshold.
But the threshold's changed.
PDEP is expected to lower the threshold severely.
Moving target. Have a sense that that number's gonna be a... I wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if, honestly, if that number didn't change on the pole.
School building repair, tournaments.
Wood, wood school, are you?
That's the lease amount, Kathy.
I'm sorry?
That's the lease amount, that 15 is the number that's carrying?
No, wood school, I mean...
BBW.
Camden schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
TWB, Green Meadows.
If they come up with a process. We split, we split the minor costs, basically, yeah. We'll show them to the lease. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Might be a drain, might be a floor tile.
Gotcha.
Of equipment.
Is this the, Craig, is this the IT part or just general, this is the IT part, right?
Thought we did that somewhere else.
Me too, but I don't see it.
Yeah, no, information technology's on the next page.
This is general.
This is hardware, basically.
And equipment maintenance, supplies, same, postage, a little bit, postage with a...
Didn't buy enough, what do they call those?
Forever stamps.
You can buy them still, just at the new price.
They're still forever, but they're a little expensive. All right, information technology.
Yeah, this is where we had notified by our, our vendor, basically, that we had a lot of computers going out of, out of service next year, and so the number went up for next year. We don't do all of them at once, there's a rotating schedule, but next year, unfortunately, hit more cars than a year before, basically.
And we had a server that you had to upgrade to.
A server that's about to fail.
When you say a computer going out of services, I mean that, that it's...
The warranties expire, so they're bold, so they rotate them?
So they're not being supported anymore.
Right.
Yeah, the discussions we had with the schools was a lot of discussion around, around IT and computers, I mean, it's a never-ending expense, this is growing and growing.
Yeah, there were quite a few on that list from two thousand eighteen, still in service.
Which, these days.
Two thousand eighteen, still in service. Uh, Website, that's, we've upgraded, we're gonna upgrade our website to a more usable and more extensive website.
We had to add the ADA compliance.
We had the ADA, we had the ADA compliance thing, so.
Audio live for accessibility access.
Really?
Yeah.
Hamlet Castile, we're going with a new, are we going with a new group?
This includes, uh, we've had some feedback from the Town Hall staff, that they're, they're not happy with the current crew, um, and Jane solicited some quotes out there, this is somebody who, I guess, with good references, and a good price, does include, I think the waxing that you recall gets done, they do the hallway.
Wax on.
Wax on.
Okay, now you're dating yourself there, that's.
Carrot itch.
Didn't notice, we all knew what it was, though. All right.
That's like, it was on Netflix now.
Town Hall Maintenance.
Get your VCR out.
Same thing, Utilities, we're going okay with that, I guess, to say, originally.
Before we, before we leave the townhouse, are there, do, do you see any expenses? Now, let me finish the question.
Okay.
Seven point five million of them.
Other, other than, you know, the, the rehabilitation renovation type expenses, do, do you foresee any, anything, you know, like generator, or.
Maybe hot water tanker.
Boiler, hot water.
Hot water's an issue, I have to say, we've seen constant failures in bathroom equipment, and for the grace of God, Jane is here fixing things where the toilet, and it's just, I'm waiting for something to fail, or walking in and hearing that the heat's not on because.
We had a toilet get stuck, and it drained the, the water district system down.
Yeah.
Because it kept running.
Really?
Yeah, for hours on end, yeah.
And there was a charity event here in this.
John and I came down and we, we fixed a stuck floater.
Wow.
And we'll say.
Our commissioners.
So this is something the board is looking at right now, is getting, like back in the day when we had Larry Moriarty available to do work here, looking for a way perhaps for a facilities management position.
So it keeps record of what's going on and what needs to be addressed, and you know?
So, so these numbers here for townhouse maintenance don't include things like a new hot water tank, is that correct?
Correct.
So how likely do you think that's gonna be, to be required in the coming year?
Probably likely.
So should that number be reflected in here?
It probably should be.
Do we have a sense of cost on it, or?
I, I think this number can handle.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have twenty-four hundred left in there now, you know?
No, that's expended.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, expended, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you think we can encompass that?
Yeah, it's just been, there've been some design questions at this point, because the venting.
Needs to go above.
Needs to go above the roof, so it's more of that, not the money per se, just the process of getting it done.
I just don't wanna get hit with anything.
I, I still think it could put us in a precarious one.
That's what the reserve fund's for, too.
Right.
That's, you know, the definition of unanticipated.
Right.
That makes sense.
If you have twenty-five thousand dollars left for this year.
We'll do it this year, right?
Can you do it this year?
You got to, you know?
Okay.
You know, or even, hate to say it, you bill it out in June and split it if it goes to something in June, something in July.
Wait a minute. Just don't tell the accountant.
Fifty, fifty years like he's never heard that before, that look of shock in your face looks so real.
You have a previous town accountant as a new manager, and he just sat, turned around as well.
We'll work it out.
Yeah, that's always the thing.
That's all you know.
Utilities, I'm shocked that number's staying good, but, you know, we're lucky here.
Gasoline, too.
Yeah.
Street lighting, gasoline pump maintenance.
That, I think, number may not be.
I think.
Mark talked to us about some state mandate that came in with the tank, etc., so we're looking for a little more clarity from him.
I was talking with Mark about that, there, there's an additional, somehow an additional test or inspection.
Yeah.
He told me it was, didn't it say twenty-eight hundred dollars, I think is the number he said.
Right.
It's tank testing that has to be done.
Yeah.
It is.
An additional mandate.
There's, might be change there.
There's no good congregation, but.
If it wasn't, it is, but then, uh.
Wildlife Control.
We have no life.
That's the, uh, that takes care of all liquor licenses, right?
Right, that's right. At Senior Center, every week they need another one.
All right, Emergency Management, this is about the same, but I, the, the supplies go, expire and everything, they go, so they go through it periodically and dump expired stuff.
The extra thousand you gave at the town meeting, you know, we did some supply replacement then, and going through the trailer, there may be some that also have expired.
A significant part of that is one of your, one of your contracts, one of your services, isn't it?
Most of it is for the nine-one-one, sorry, Rave, Blackboard, the thing you just got, the meeting, the voicemail.
The spam, yeah.
The robo-call software, if you will.
And you sounded wonderful, Brian.
Yeah, thanks, Brian, that was your first audition.
Yes.
We'll see what the feedback is on Facebook.
Traffic Control.
And again, traffic control is just for the town projects, detail work, any, any outside project, they pay for their own traffic detail, yeah.
The pub, we don't have a number in there for Public Health there, that's.
I think it was waiting for, that's part of the wage.
That's part of the shared thing, right?
Yeah, so they had a new wage study done in Long Meadow, and that would affect that, I'm gonna say slightly, because we, we share that service.
Gonna keep that going forward, though?
Yeah, we'll get that back, I think Lynn Simmons is supposed to give us that number, or Lynn or.
So that's true, true of the shared services, you just don't have a number yet.
We don't have it yet, but I, again, unless they made out really well Long Meadow, you know, you wouldn't anticipate that to be a huge bump right there.
Ambulance, that would be the final year of a final extension, we could do a one-year extension, or we could go out again for three years, but.
So the shared service part.
Yeah.
That's the part where we did see that, we have a deficit in the current year, just like we did last year, because of, I don't wanna say underfunding, or flat funding on the grant from the state for Finn's operation, the four-town operation, they've given us a projected number, which just came in, I believe, Don, for a projected shortfall for next.
Yeah, it was, uh.
Twenty-five.
Ten thousand something.
Not huge, when you consider we were short actually last year.
Twenty-something last year.
So we'll have that number penciled in for shared services.
So a shortfall in the current year, about ten?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we need to bump up the number appropriated for next year, basically.
So that twenty-five.
As a placeholder.
As a placeholder, expect it'll be something over that.
Yeah.
We should have that.
They should let us know. I think, are they coming next week? They're gonna come in next week. Ambulance, that would be a, a one-year extension, um, they're already projecting sixty thousand rebate for next year, so far.
Fifty-nine in the current year, correct?
Fifty-nine in the current year, probably sixty.
What's the, um, what, you know, I don't wanna open the can of worms here, but, you know, what's the, the overall feedback on the ambulance?
Excellent.
Is that, um, I'm not hearing any complaints, which I, I take as good news.
I think they, I think they, I, I think they, I don't, I don't hear any complaints, I think. Everything I've heard is the response time has been awesome. Yeah.
The only thing I hear about is the billing, the pricing is expensive.
Yeah.
More so than, than in other communities.
My free calls have been perfect.
One of the, one of the things I noticed the first year we went through that process with them, when they were doing, uh, doing, giving us the math on, on our rebates, is the retail price that they ask, and what they actually collect in most cases is a huge spread, um, you know, I mean, you know, Medicare, they, they give them like a, you know, seventy-six percent cutoff of retail right away. Medicare, they get reimbursed four hundred and fifty dollars, actually. You know, and they have contracts with all these different insurance companies, I don't know what you do when you're a private pay, you know, whether you can negotiate or not. You can. Well, you can tell them to pound sand, so there's, there's, I don't know, there's gonna be some leverage, because they also have half a million dollars in uncollectibles every year.
Right.
Yeah, they don't, and, and, you know, and you know, you see your own insurance bills, they, they come in, you says your doctor's appointment was a five hundred dollars, and he gets a hundred and fifty bucks, you know, and you pay your ten dollars.
Don, did you say that we're getting, they're projected?
Projected.
Sixty thousand dollars?
In the fall, in the next year, sixty, fifty-nine.
Come back in October.
Okay, you mean we will receive that within twenty-five, fiscal twenty-five?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that'll, that's a good estimated receipt.
Yeah, it was fifty-nine thousand last year, last fiscal year.
I'm trying to sit on this, my wife, she has, she has some separation anxiety.
You're a heck of a guy, Cliff, I wouldn't doubt it.
Mine, mine, mine has separation anxiety, too, she's afraid I'm gonna come back.
Craig, is there any way to put private pay retail pricing into a contract negotiation?
I think that's something we need to negotiate, but yeah, that's.
It's an interesting thought.
Yeah, when, when you look at the, the rates through the communities, you know, there's a, a wide margin.
I mean, I haven't been involved with the ambulance committee at all, I've, you know, just been an observer to it, but from what I've seen, it seems like it supports very well, and they provided what seems to be, you know, very, very good service. Yeah?
The other thing they're doing, too, is they're providing a lot of mutual aid, which helps us, because we, that goes through our thing, you know? We lease Long Meadow all the time. Uh, okay, building facilitate.
We need to go back to Water District, I think.
That goes back to our.
Okay, oh, yeah, Water District, yeah, yeah.
Um, I know, we had asked the Water Commission, like, to kind of throw together what they thought would be a appropriate budget, because we know the testing has gone up, right?
Yes.
And do you, have you thought about any figures about how much is going up?
Well, we're looking at at least a hundred thousand dollars in testing.
Uh, how about?
Well, this is, this is only for the district, this is not.
Just, just the current district?
This is just the district.
Right, right now, we have what, ten for operations and four for testing, you still feel that's adequate?
No.
No?
No. Have you decided, any of the other testing that's going on, landfill and such?
No, no, this doesn't include houses that are not connected.
Just, just current districts.
It's just the.
There's already a hundred thousand in the PFAS testing.
Yeah.
So this is just the old-school water system.
Bob Flag's bill's going up?
Right, it will be, yes.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause, you know, we, we had the ten thousand when it was, the, the district had just expanded, but now we're, we're, he's doing the multiple testings here, then throughout the rest of the district, so, I mean, is, is the testing at four thousand still adequate for what he's doing currently, or is, is, are we pushing that threshold?
We're pushing it, um, I expect it to go up for, in, in July.
But this, this is, again, testing just the district.
I'm far enough ahead.
Right.
Yeah, just the district, not.
Yeah.
Homes that are not connected to the.
Yeah, I know the last time I, I had spoken with Bob Flag at a meeting, you know, he was coming back and doing retesting for some contamination issues, so that just added to the overall cost, so I mean, should, should we, should we increase it by another thousand for testing?
At least, at least, I would.
But, again, this is only.
Current district.
Current.
Yeah, nothing to do with anything else.
There's nothing to do with outside homes, that's the other account is outside homes.
Our state doesn't mandate more.
But that's still not this accounting, right, that's the other account, right.
So five thousand on that line?
Said at least five thousand.
And also, right now, they don't have a clerk that does any of their billing, it's all the committee that's been kind of doing stuff, and Jane was doing it prior.
Really?
So Jane was doing a lot of the, uh.
I didn't know she had that head as well.
Jane was doing a lot of the, um, the clerical for the Water District, so maybe a couple hours here and there.
So where do you expect that to come from, is that?
Can we put that under the Board Health Coordinator?
We, we could put that under the rules of the Board Health Coordinator, sure, so that, that might fall back onto the new person.
So do you, does that line item need to be revisited here, then?
That would be under Operations, I think we're okay for that, just the testing I was concerned about.
Okay.
You know, there may be some changes in job descriptions based on who Jane's replacement is, you know, Ryan's got sixty days to figure out.
Yeah.
If there's a, if there's a different way that this place should be structured, because she has been the facilities manager, she's been the Water Department Clerk, she's been.
Can we go through the warrant, we all, you at the same time, while you're here?
Yes, but before, before we do, we'd like to discuss COLA.
Oh, okay.
We discussed it earlier this evening, um, and kind of all shared our views of it, and came up with a number that we can all support at three and a half percent.
That's gonna be your recommendation?
Yeah, and what we'd like to do with you is come up with a number, a consensus number, so that we can start actually looking at what the COLA impact's gonna be on the salary requests.
So the current CPI, we got a number from at three point one, correct, as of February, so, and you're talking this COLA obviously to take effect July first, and I don't believe in anything I've read, they are projecting an increase in CPI, it's been dropping, and they're hoping they have inflation sort of under control.
These are the same people that said this is transient inflation.
Correct, yeah.
I, I did hear a report with the last few days that inflation was creeping back up.
Yes, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Finally dropped the prime, finally, for a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, and we understand, you know, we, we're all in the three to four percent range, um, you know, understanding that, you know, this, this could be overshooting, could be undershooting, but this is, you know, a number that, um, is fair to employees and fair to taxpayers.
What was last year's COLA, was four, correct?
Four, four. We had five, four?
Plus steps.
Plus steps.
How many people get that, about half, ballpark?
Half get, half get a step every, it's a step every two years, so.
Right, but some are getting it somewhere, yeah.
Right, it's in, the step is with two percent, so basically, you're getting two percent every two years, or one percent a year.
Right, but not necessarily half the people every other year, because it depends on their hire date and stuff like that.
It's, it's close, it's close. They, they get the step and the COLA.
Those that are on the step.
Yeah, the step is seniority, yeah.
So three and a half is our, you know, that's our suggestion, understanding full well what that means in terms of how it ripples through everything else and, you know, all the other expenses.
Historically, we've actually always looked at advisory for this recommendation, and not really.
You are the subject matter expert.
Because they consider, I really don't see a.
I'm trying, I mean, we're in negotiation with the police, you know, so. I understand there's a Highway Department trigger, too?
Separate, yeah.
I'm gonna call it a trigger.
CPI trigger. CPI trigger.
Well, doesn't, that doesn't trigger anything, it just, it doesn't trigger conversation?
It triggers our consideration of whether to have a conversation.
It doesn't trigger anything financially, it triggers a conversation, so it doesn't, to me, in the term of trigger, it doesn't affect anything.
We got the impression when we saw their budget that until we knew what you, what was going to happen in that conversation, we couldn't set that salary number.
Interesting.
So you're not there, you haven't had that conversation?
No, it's not, we're definitely talking to that union.
And how, uh, you're nowhere near close on the police contract yet, are you?
Uh, I think we're actually close.
Oh, good.
Very close.
We finished the chief contract.
Finished the chief's contract.
All right, so you might actually, we might actually know stuff before annual meeting, or before town meeting?
It could happen.
That would be great.
Don't sound like it never happened.
A lot of times it doesn't, we're making it up in the fall.
Yeah.
All right, so are we gonna endorse their recommendation?
I, I think it's magnanimous of them.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Makes it easy. You want a motion, or you want to just say, go to it?
Well done, hail and hardy.
I mean, it's a recommendation, it comes from us, so I mean, it's not binding until it gets voted by town meeting.
And the conversation so far has been, you're waiting for the recommendation from the advisory committee, and there you are, so thank you for the hard work.
Okay, so now we know.
Albatoni.
The, um, animal inspector or dog officer, is that now under the police budget, or is that, uh?
That's under the.
We're leaving it there.
That's under the police budget.
Okay, they, they gave us that number, I missed their.
Yeah, I missed in there, and.
You want to review the warrant, do you have any? Well, we're gonna put you back to work.
Absolutely.
Well, while we're doing that, let's see what we can get.
Mrs. Davenport watches the Zoom recording of this.
She's reading, she's a big reader, thank God.
Somehow, I just don't think that would be considered her entertainment, is watching Don on TV.
Must-see TV. You can actually track that, or I know Bob did, the number of views we get on our YouTube channel, it was surprisingly high.
What, what number do you consider surprisingly?
Over fifteen.
And that's not percent.
It reminds me of a story of the Nelson ratings of Walter Cronkite, when it used to be one, you had a Nelson box and it had a huge impact. And they, Walter Cronkite was always doing very well, they did a little deep research into it, and there was somebody who left that station on because their dog really liked his voice.
So, you got him?
Well, page one is kind of boiled off like, you know, all the way up to the revolving funds, that's all the time.
No prior year bills?
Not that we know of.
Not yet. That's a four-fifth vote passed, too, so we don't want those.
Yeah, we don't.
What the, what is the one that's a nine-tenths? I saw them a couple of years ago, we had a nine-tenths vote for something.
I don't remember.
Uh, Enterprise Fund, we're not there with that number yet, we know there's gonna be a, a bag purchase. We're hoping it can hold off the next year, but Jane's not feeling good.
Had a conflict, we're hurting that account.
Well, I've been surprised how much there's, the retained earning, you've been able to use retained earnings to help.
Yeah, but we didn't appropriate, didn't anything into it last year.
Right, but you still use them.
Yeah, but we're down.
Yeah, I'm down to like ten or so, yeah.
Uh, a little lower than that.
Yeah, so we're hoping that.
Last I looked, there was only twenty-four hundred dollars in that account.
Well, two years ago, there were thirty-six thousand in retained earnings, and we used some of that to offset the thing, so we'll have to be a little tighter on the number. But I think they projected, yeah, so the projected quote, I think, was in the, Don, you saw, nine, ten range, something like that for bags, small bags.
I think it was just under ten, wasn't it?
Yeah, small bags, hoping that, uh, we can put that off till after July first.
So, um, so do you expect to have to put some money into?
Yes, yeah, don't have a number yet. No, because now we know the number for the salaries, you know, we'll put that and figure that in as well.
Are you going article by article, because I have a couple of questions?
Okay.
Yeah, let's go article by article.
Okay, we don't have the town report on yet, annual budget, you guys are on that, no prior year bills. Did the spending limits change? I don't think so, the revolving funds, I think, will be the same, I doubt it.
I doubt it, it doesn't, doesn't affect budget.
No, so Enterprise Fund, we're, that's probably gonna require something from reason appropriate, but in the past, it's been in the ten range, I think. Doug's right, Doug's gonna report on CPC.
Yeah, community preservation, I mean, we have this request from, uh, the, the land trust to purchase a piece of property up here on North Road. Community preservation, we're meeting, uh, twenty-seventh, I think it is, to review it.
Is it actually one point six acre parcel? I thought it was a larger size that they were gonna split.
It is a larger piece.
So it needs to be reflected on the larger size?
Yeah, I, I wanna say it's about a four acre.
Right.
I think the one point six is the split part.
Right, but they, they're not buying, they're buying the whole property.
Originally they were, but I guess it sounds like they're changing, because now it says a portion of the part.
Well, one point six, what the town's gonna own, they're gonna split the other three acres off and sell it.
Right, but my question is, are they buying the whole thing with the CPC, CCA money, and then splitting it off and investing that money back?
I don't think they were, they were gonna buy it with their own money.
Right.
Split it, and then have the town buy the part they didn't want.
Yeah, one twenty-four won't buy it, won't buy the whole parcel, that's what our portion is worth.
And I, uh, I adamant that our portion is not worth that much.
Okay.
I concur with my gentleman to the right.
Because that's, that was in our meeting, that they, the property's been for sale at a price, and nobody's bought it, that's either because nobody wants to buy the property, because it's either not in demand, or there's something wrong with it, or the price is wrong.
Understood.
And then they were coming back and saying, well, we negotiated, I think it was a one forty, one forty.
That was one seventy.
One seventy, I thought they negotiated.
One seventy for the whole thing, now they're gonna take off the house part of it, and sell the part that's not the house for a hundred and twenty.
Right, it is a house, and then they're gonna sell the rest. Then they're gonna sell the rest and put it into their, their land trust fund, so.
We, we haven't met with land trusts, I, I've, you know, I, I saw the original proposal, um, I, I haven't, you know, seen a revised.
I'm just concerned, we're, we're footing more of the bill for the property for them to sell the rest of the property.
But I'm not sure that this number is accurate, so let's, let's get some clarification.
I would say, I can see the plan going forward, I just can't see this number going forward with the plan.
Right, but I mean, I, yes.
Well, the question I would have for them is, if there's a shortfall, whose problem is it? Because there is some, some work they have to do here, and if there's a profit, whose money is it, or what's it gonna be used for, that's the negotiation, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, the discussion that I had with the people from the, the land trust was, this is the first time there's been a proposal where there's been an unknown like that. You know, and people don't, people aren't comfortable with an unknown.
Great, so originally, they, they told us they were gonna buy it and look for reimbursement, so. This, the way it's worded here, looks like they wanted us to buy it.
Yeah, so I don't, I wasn't involved with the preparation of this language, so I don't know.
Yeah, we need, we need more information.
Yeah, um, and then there, there had been a, some discussion about a potential request from Prox and Rec. You know, those are preliminary, there's no actual request yet, so we'll see, we'll, we'll know by next Wednesday whether or not we're gonna have a request from them. That's it.
Con-con is your typical thousand dollars. Annual thousand dollar appropriation.
One of these years, we actually have to make an expenditure from that account.
Well, actually, they're getting more than that, because as part of the, the lease or the contract for the solar landfill, when they start paying the full hundred-plus thousand, five thousand of that goes towards the conservation fund.
Really?
Annually, yes.
We did that already for this.
Right, and didn't the, um, Laughing Broke have something that they were gonna contribute to for the property up in Chapin, was that that? I vaguely remember something about that.
That was the McKenzie Trust or the other one?
I don't remember of it.
Yeah.
But I thought they were gonna donate to something for monitoring.
I got a question, and just quickly, I'm reading, you read Article Six, am I right?
That's what Doug did, yeah.
Thirteen, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tony.
On, there's Article thirteen also, so I'm kind of confused.
The, you have to have two articles, I realize that there's a conflict in the language, but the Article thirteen is the votes the town to accept the land, which was the mistake we made last year, where we, we raised the money and then we forgot to put that article in. So the CPA article is strictly to, to raid the CPA funds, we also have to authorize selectmen to take the land.
You'd say raid?
Raid, yeah.
We should probably organize them, they're closer together, that would be nice, yeah.
Plus, there's two different dollars.
Two different prices.
Yeah, that was the amusing part, you know, inflation went up three percent, three and a half, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no.
No, stated, we appreciate all the state aid we can get, if you want more, same thing for the library. Kelly has informed us that they've got their, I think she even gave us the number, I can't recall what it was, but they probably told you when, when they met with you.
No.
No.
Okay. Lauren, you ever seen an email from Kelly with an actual number for the?
There's a number on it, I'll look.
Should have forwarded that to you. The next one is really the subject of the major discussion here.
Do you have a dollar amount?
She's getting that now.
No, for Article eleven?
That's what I'm talking about right now.
Yeah.
So they have a projected number of six point six, Cliff, roughly, yeah, six point six, and I think the question here is, how would you prepare, how would we propose to fund that? Would that require override vote at the election? There has been talk of a series of notes, which I don't think is a way to go.
Well, that would be during the construction.
Right, but I think you still need a full authorization at the beginning for.
I just ask you one question, just so I can make a more informed decision about Article eleven. What's the dollar amount for the fire station design that you're anticipating, Article fifteen?
We're not there yet, but if you want to jump ahead, I mean.
I just want, I wanna be able to compare how much we're.
So the, the, the design, I'll, I'll answer that.
Okay.
The design for the fire station is of trying to follow in the footsteps that the senior center building committee did, is they're looking to hire an architect to put the design together, so maybe somewhere in the fifty to seventy thousandish range for design, but that's, that's not a.
That's an RFQ number.
RFQ number, I'm sorry.
Not a RP, RFQ.
Well, we did the RFQ already, and now it's.
Now it's an actual proposal, but I mean, that's the number for, yeah, to come up, to come up with the number, right. So if there was a, sorry.
Article ten is sixteen thousand.
Okay, so assessment number is sixteen, pretty in line with prior years. So the six point six, um, if you go by prior years, and I can only think of maybe three or four things in the past twenty years, Green Meadows, the high school, Highway Bond, police station that required vote, and I'm not even sure the police station required, did we keep it inside the thing, but actually authorize it?
No, we override.
We did override, yeah, so those are probably the last four overrides in twenty years that passed.
Yeah, and I think those are the only ones that have come up.
No, we failed on the one, no, the street light, so that's why the lights are off.
Two thousand five, we were just talking about the.
The four that passed in the past twenty years are probably those four.
Yeah, we used to have to do it even for fire trucks, you know, back in the old days, but, so. We get an authorization to borrow, we do, um, bond anticipation notes of while we're building the thing, until we finally get the big number, then we go out for bonding. Based on what we're paying at the police station, you know, we're talking about probably six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in debt service. We have about nine hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars in excess levy capacity. It would be possible to do this without an override vote, but that means our available levy capacity goes down to three hundred thousand dollars. And if anything backfires, if anything goes wrong, it's two thousand five all over again.
Now, the current notes that we have, and like I say, we have two outstanding notes at the police station and the high, and the high school at this point, and neither of those are close to, is it, is it thirty on the police station, or twenty?
I thought it was twenty, but.
Twenty also, yeah, so we're probably halfway through that.
Yeah, and, you know, in retrospect, we're now talking about replacing a twenty-year-old building. So when you talk about mortgage lengths here, isn't the senior center twenty years old?
Yeah, we're not, we're expanding.
Wow.
You're essentially renovating and expanding, right?
I understand, but I guess what I'm saying is, um, that, you know, to go thirty-year mortgage on a building that you're, you, you.
May remodel in twenty years.
You rebuild every twenty years, maybe not be the smartest thing in the world, so.
So I guess we're looking for the consensus of how we're gonna go forward with this. Do we put that number here, and then do we go for an override the following week, as we have done the past?
I, I, I think it should be an override, I think the whole town should have an opportunity to say yes or no.
And that's, and that's why the committee decided to do, let's do a four, a couple forums, let's have a walk through. You don't just walk up the town meeting and say, oh, by the way, here's the number we need.
Right.
You've gotta put it out there. I used an analogy of look what happened in East Long Meadow, they needed a hundred and seventy-five million dollar high school, and it passed because they put plenty of information out there. Minutog passed because a lot of people did a good job of putting it out there. And people, you give the people the facts and they believe in them, they'll make the right choice, or they'll make an informed choice. But we wanted to make sure everybody's in.
In that instance, it's gotta pass town meeting for the budget approval, and then it's gotta go to the, the ballot for the town vote.
The message actually says, subject to a positive referendum vote.
What happens if it doesn't pass at town meeting?
So this will be a two-thirds vote, because it's borrowing, sorry?
Two-thirds at the town meeting, majority at the override, right.
I think that's the way to go.
Okay, then I guess in terms of the budget, and that would be the question, how much would be in the budget for next year, do you think? If we're passing this and having to service something in the FY twenty-five, that'd be a number you would need to know, because is there something if?
No.
Or is it all BANs, all BANs and all authorized by?
Yeah, it does, there's no reason, we, no, we don't have to start paying for it until we bond it.
Right.
Everything else is on vans.
You said short-term borrowing, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, state house notes.
Right, okay.
Do we pay those off?
So I guess our question is then, somebody needs to inform the town clerk, basically, this is a warrant, this is a question for the, uh, town election warrant, which we saw at the bottom here, and that's gonna be expanded.
He's pointing to Brian.
Right, okay. And then fix the offices, which are still on.
Yeah.
So we saw the cemeteries still on.
We need to get our, get our language straight on that sooner rather than later.
We also have to do that, yeah, should be happy to millions for that.
Again, you know, it's not much different than a police station, you know, body.
Yeah, no, it's the same process.
Pilot agreement, this is a change in the, in the, basically, state enabling that, but also the request of the.
They already, the town already voted to allow us to do this, but now the state has changed the law, so we have to vote again to do it this way.
We can't tell you they're not gonna change it again.
Right, we could change it again.
No guarantees.
The only good thing about it is there's no money associated.
It's coming, if there's money, it's coming this way, in the end, somehow.
Thirteen, we already discussed.
Landfill tower lease, that's the same thing, that's a.
This, this required town meeting action to extend the lease, basically, for the.
Any interest in land requires, we don't trust you guys with that, you know.
I don't, really, I don't blame them.
I mean, cell power, Don gets free cell service, but it's a great job.
No, I have to go to the end of my street to make a phone call on my cellphone, I go by Cliff's old house there.
Would you buy that, plan for seniors and dancers advertising or something?
You have to go to Florida for that, I think, as well.
And fire station design, Craig, you're, that, we should have a number, you think?
Yeah, we should have a number for that, and like I said, you know, we, we saw the way that the senior center building committee operated, and we're trying to model the, the path forward after what they did. Since they, uh, did a great job, that we feel that was the right way to do it, so.
We, you guys want a drop dead, I know we talked about throwing these numbers out, obviously, your hearing is on the eighth, correct?
Uh, well.
Which is three weeks, two weeks.
I mean, that's, that's the number that's been penciled in, it's not.
April eighth, yeah.
Do you think it's realistic to have a number by April eighth, if they have it in here?
I think so.
So that'd be the only one that, I think, I don't see why we can't have every number listed here for you in time for your public hearing.
Why don't we, why don't we aim for that then?
Okay.
Yeah, because that would be helpful.
Yep, well, I'd take that back, now we got, okay, sixteen. We're discussing that earlier, so, Greg, you wanna talk there, or John can talk on that, or?
So, Skinnig Valley Water District? We'll go back to the DEP mandated testing, they, they come to us and say, hey, you know, the state's got this great new plan, we're gonna start testing everybody for PFOS around public, um, landfills and transfer stations, whether they're closed or open or whatnot. And we've been doing normal testing there per the, the settlement that happened twenty-two years ago. Um, but because of this new requirement, PFOS is very expensive to test for, and what would be yearly testing switches to quarterly testing if any detection of PFOS is detected in any of the hits. Now you, now you have to test quarterly on every single house, which is nine originally, John, was it nine additional? Then there was some concerns of other homes within the geographical area, it expanded to close to eighteen homes. So now we have eighteen additional homes testing for PFOS, which gives us that total roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in testing, long story short.
And does that affect the quarterly testing, the one fifty?
I believe so, I believe it's right around there for the, the quarterly testing. DEP is still coming down, they're like, hey, you know, we, we see you're making progress, but we need to have some resolution, long-term goals are either you filter these homes indefinitely, post and pre-filtering, still maintain the quarterly testing. Post and pre-filtering, still maintain the quarterly testing, or we try to hook them up to the, the water district to get them on clean serviceable water, which eliminates all need for testing.
Well, Craig, and as Craig was saying, that's the testing cost, if you get a hit, there's a filtering cost on top of that.
Correct.
And that's a number, and if the DEP, not DEP, EPA changes the target from twenty.
Parts per trillion.
Parts per trillion.
Twenty parts per trillion.
We're gonna have a lot more hits, and those houses will need treatment as well for a number of, the, the amount, treatment number on an annual basis. You know, it depends on how many filters need to be changed, but it's not great.
Would it be your recommendation to just hook them all up to the existing?
Yeah, so the, the long term solution is to provide them with clean drinking water.
Right.
Um, which the only available option is Skidink Valley Water District. And at this point, the water district is twenty-two years old, the in-ground hydrodynamic tank is pretty close to its service limits. They don't build them that way anymore, the DEP's always said, hey, this is gonna fail, but when it fails, it's gonna be very expensive. So the thoughts are to service these new homes, the district pump house needs to be rebuilt and upgraded. To, one, meet the needs of the new houses, cause it, you can't. You can't service those houses currently.
Okay.
So in order to bring everything up to date, we need to do two phases, one is upgrade the pump house and well system, and then hook up all the homes.
And do you have a dollar amount for that at all?
Yes, um, so they're, they're floating numbers right now, but the rough. Phase one pump house expansion, we're probably looking, was it seven hundred thousand roughly? And that's, you know, could fluctuate depending on market and stuff like that.
But.
In the second phase?
That needs to be done because it's reaching the end of its service life and it doesn't have.
It doesn't have capacity, correct, so service life and needed capacity.
Okay.
To enable to do anything further.
I'm just curious, from a talking point, point of view, if we weren't expanding, but we just had to do our twenty year revamp on that. Um, do you have any idea how much that would have been?
Just on the pump house?
Yeah, just the pump house to bring it back up, up to today's standards.
You're probably looking close to the same because you're gonna put it in new above ground storage tank, you're, obviously you're gonna double the capacity because you don't wanna lose pressure, so it, it would still roughly be the same.
Okay.
That's good, so these were needed repairs, upgrades anyhow.
Right, well, yeah, Cliff?
The EPA is squeezing you, is there any reason, believe that they won't keep squeezing you and squeezing you, and we'd have to do that eventually anyway?
Correct.
Correct.
And how much is the, uh?
Phase two.
How much is phase two?
Phase two is still.
Two A, two B.
Yeah, so there was, originally we were building around nine homes, and then DEP came back and said, hey, well, there's nine more on top of the nine we already gave it. So I think the original estimate was, John, remember, one, one and a half million maybe?
Yes, just to take care of those homes in the, within the district.
Right. The nine?
Just the nine, it's one and a half million?
These are, these are all very crude numbers, so. I think we're planning on getting a presentation from Time Bond in the near future, which will, they'll be able to give us more accurate information.
Oh.
John, you have something?
Basically, so there are seven homes, seven homes in the current district that the line passes by already. The average price to hook them up is in the ten thousand dollar ballpark per home.
So for seventy grand, we can take seven people out of the testing.
List right there, but we do need the upgrade of the pump house. But then you're not paying for, for the testing of those homes anymore. At. Ten thousand.
Incremental phases.
So that's the phase, kind of phase two A thing.
Yeah.
Then the expansion, as Craig said, of the homes that are, are in the district but not hooked up, now you have to run pipe down the road to get to those homes. There's your million plus cost to do that.
Would you be using ARPO money for some of that?
Yes, some of it.
How much, how much ARPO is left?
Four fiftyish.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
So.
Is any of that four fifty earmarked for anything?
Just this, water district, we had been planning to use it for that.
There's no grants for this?
Well, you can try.
Do, grants.
We can look.
We can look.
So.
I'm assuming that others, other towns are having this issue.
There are some grants, and I believe John applied for one when, when Bob was here, um, I don't know what the status of that was, I haven't heard anything.
So what are you talking about asking for this year?
What we're saying with.
We're saying that we were gonna do phase one, which is upgrading the pump house and connecting the seven homes currently the line goes by. And the, say there was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we got about four hundred left.
We got four, four, four fifty left in that, we needed another four hundred to finish phase one. Cause we can't even talk phase two until the pump house work is done.
Right.
So, so Article sixteen, four hundred thousand?
I think that's a good rough number.
I think that was the one, yeah.
Right.
And. Long story short.
And it's a one time charge, it's, you know, right.
I understand, if we're right up against it too, we could split it over a couple of years, we could get a baron authorization and put half it on a note.
Right.
Depending on what else we're doing for capital.
Yeah, how the whole, the big picture looks.
I know it was a long roundabout story to get to that number, but, you know, there's a lot of backstory there.
Complicated issue.
Yeah.
But again, those shows it's not, this is, this doesn't, this gets you partway there.
Yeah.
The other thing, we had a great conversation with Dan Hall. He's worked with us on the landfill for twenty plus years, but he was very straightforward, DEP is not gonna let us go. But the better we are at being forward about it, the better they're gonna treat us. And being proactive like this helps us with the state in a big way.
It's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for the residents too over there.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, again, the seven hookups, obviously, you know, that saved us seventy grand a year right away.
And testing, right there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's an investment for some region.
Yeah, that was free, free hookups basically, after we put.
Well. Well, don't forget the water commissioner is gaining money every year from, uh, water sales.
Yeah.
Five hundred bucks a year?
Two customers.
The big impact on the budget.
That must be easy one. Hundred and fiftieth anniversary. If we make it. Okay.
That's, I mean, we, we had ten thousand last year at the boards, and I'm looking for another ten, but.
Try to, try to be consistent here, another ten?
Maybe it's a fault type thing, you don't know.
Fiber optic.
All right, great.
Um, this is probably just gonna be an informational thing.
Committee just started.
The committee just started, they met last week, but they're gonna meet again next week. And they, they got some thoughts going forward.
Pickup truck, sixty thousand.
I'm sorry. Looking at the pickup truck with blow is sixty, but the cruiser.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, Mark discussed his pickup truck when he came in and met with us, and we met with the chief.
Last week, yeah.
You know, and he's got a request in for a cruiser and or a pickup truck.
For seven, seventy, I'm like.
Seventy.
Yeah.
One, one third of the price of a cruiser is not the car, it's all the crap that I put into it. I went back and checked like five or six of the last purchases, and the car is only two thirds of the vehicle price. So next time you take one out, we talk about taking one out of service early and passing it down, we're throwing away a third of the value.
Yeah, but when that stuff is there, like all the electronic, aren't they moving it from vehicle to vehicle?
Sometimes yes and sometimes no.
I know, they're always changing. Oh, I got the Tahoe now.
That was the excuse that, and then, oh, well, we'll, we'll throw in a radar gun, you know, cause we can get it while we're buying the cruiser, cause it's gonna sit in the cruiser glove box.
Might as well.
It's, I went back five, five different purchases. So, and, so it's a third of the value is the other stuff.
From, from what I thought you said was the radios. And the computer, whatever, would be transferred.
Those would be, yeah, cause the radios are part of the deal with the communications.
So, yeah, so it's the lighting.
All, all the stuff that's fixed on.
Oh, they're still gonna wire the radio, they're still gonna wire the lights, they're still gonna put the cages in.
I don't, I don't wanna discuss this now, but I mean, we, we did have a discussion with, with the chief about. A recommendation that we changed the service life from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. He didn't seem to have much information on that, other than that he said he's been sending repair costs and mileage to the board on a monthly basis.
I, I, I think monthly is a very generous term, I would say biannually, but, I mean, the.
He may track it monthly.
He may track it, we don't get it.
Right, I mean, that, that's, the whole issue of, of when to replace the vehicles. Prompted the, the issue of, you know, trying to have better record keeping.
I, I, I would be under the. Assumption we maybe switch to hours instead of mileage.
Well, capital planning before they stop meeting, I'd spend a lot of time, that has been a lot of time tracking this stuff, and of course Jeff's. Jeff's cruiser program was cruisers have a hundred thousand mile warranty, so when they get their river, hit a hundred thousand, let's get rid of them so we don't have to pay any maintenance. And the, um, the capital planning discussed whether or not it should be a hundred, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty. They said, well, if we don't try something, we'll never have any data, and capital planning had voted to recommend to the selectmen to recommend to the police department to go to one twenty-five. I have no idea how far that message actually got at the time.
So my, my counter to that is, to, to when Jeff was saying that the warranty runs out a hundred thousand miles, but it's a hundred thousand miles or so many hours. My question is, are we meeting those hours before you even hit a hundred thousand miles, which negates the point of keeping them that long, so we just go to one twenty-five anyway.
All the data we were, all the data that we were given was based on mileage.
I don't think we saw any hour data.
Yeah, cause yeah, you know, I worked in the dealer, we used to see those outfitted cruisers all the time, and we would have to run the hours for warranty, not mileage.
Yeah.
For the hours.
But anyway.
You know, the one hours.
Any other?
If we, if we don't try going longer, we won't have any idea what the costs are.
Yeah, there, there's a whole formula that you multiply by.
Right, back to the pickup truck, we had just done a truck a year or so ago, when I think we rolled down the park truck.
You're talking this truck here for the highway?
Yeah, back the highway thing, so.
This made sense, the, the request for the police, that, that was only a. Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand miles, which.
You know, is, is.
And it wasn't like it was rolling somewhere else either.
So anyway, we, you know, we, we had some brief discussion about that, but it seemed like that may be a year early looking at replacing that.
I'd be open to one twenty-five too, though, I think that'd be reasonable with the way things.
And, you know, and until we actually, you know, as Dick says, until we have that data, and you, you know, we're, we're basically making a decision in the vacuum.
One point we made to the chief also was that this is a year when the police budget is gonna be including dispatch operations now. So maybe it's not the year to put on a seventy thousand dollar cruiser, on top of the fact that we're gonna be paying sixty-two, five roughly.
Sixty-two, five.
Right, for the first year of regional dispatch. So, everything has to be balanced.
Which is still a smoking hot deal.
It is, but everything, you know, so that savings we had disappeared in the first year, so. Anyway, pickup truck for Mark, with a plow. Fair deal, you know.
The savings may disappear, but if we had, if we had kept it where it was, we'd be in the four fifty or five hundred thousand.
Yep.
Range of.
With dispatch.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We don't, Don, twenty?
Uh, scratch twenty.
Well, or it might be a capital thing, we're not, there was some talk about wireless access points and the.
Yes.
A capital, but that may be a separate.
I think.
I thought they said they were gonna put it with their. In their budget.
I thought we had guidance last year that could.
Well, we, we requested, we being advisory and Wilberham Finance requested of the school committee that they put their operating assessment and their capital assessment separately. So that one wasn't bound to the other, cause, you know, it's entirely, they had those five proposals last year. It was quite likely that at least one of them wouldn't have garnered enough support in one town or the other, in which case the entire operating budget is at risk. Didn't make a lot of sense to do that, so we asked them to break it out.
Do you think that's how Wilberham was going to be getting theirs as well?
I think that's how they wanted, yes.
So would you say this article then would be more the capital request for Minotaur? If, we'll keep it as a place.
Was it the projectors or was it wifi?
Wifi.
Wifi.
Well, it was. The wireless.
Wireless access points.
Yes, wireless access points, yes.
And were the projectors incorporated into the operating budget?
I believe so.
Okay.
We've had some discussion, we being the, you know, advisory with the school committee and the operational subcommittee. About whether or not, you know, computers and things like the projectors, you know, the, the short throw projectors that use in the classroom now. Whether or not those were appropriately capital or whether they were operating, and we, we, both advisory and Wilberham Finance have encouraged them to consider them to be operating expenses now.
And Craig's made that point to them as well last week, I think.
So their budget is gonna be higher reflecting those costs, but that's at the request of the towns.
So we'll leave Article twenty there for now, and it may be a capital, it's just to have it there, but.
Definitely not, nothing to do with the agreement.
No, nothing to do with the agreement, if I might add. It's a year of my life that went down the toilet.
Yeah, but you look younger before.
Never to be gotten back.
Oh, no, he looks, he looks, he looks younger since it stopped.
They, they panicked, they, they panicked, yeah.
And then you got the next one.
Very concerned about. A lot of frivolous things.
Twenty-one through twenty-six are basically no, don't require any money, just a matter of amending the bylaws. Based on what their recommendations are.
I didn't know, moved up the.
Oh, I see, well, one, one of them requires some spending?
I'm sorry, what, what? Which one?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
If you need an electronic voting system.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think we were gonna try and get some pricing on that.
Well, you're gonna have to change the article, cause the article only authorizes the use of it, it doesn't do anything about raising appropriate.
You're not, there was no numbers.
Yeah.
Associated.
It just makes it legal.
Yep.
So either there needs to be another article for a price.
Have you discussed these, these government study recommendations?
No.
No.
Not everywhere, no, we haven't, um, because some of these are, you know, some substantial changes.
Do you think that discussion should be a joint discussion?
With you guys?
Us and you folks?
Sure, we're always happy to speak to you.
Scared, that's fierce, the daylight.
I think they might invoke some more community discussion too.
And we could have this at, at our public hearing, you know, I mean, that might be the time to have, have.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things here that affect public's perception and public's involvement.
And there, you know, and there's a lot of them at once, so.
Right. Yeah, this comes strictly just to a town meeting vote without any prior knowledge, you know, people at the meeting are being like.
What's this about?
What's this, yeah, what, what are we doing?
Well, they'll be looking to both of these boards for guidance.
Yeah, I don't like that treasure.
Well, I don't think they should be looking to the selectman for any of these articles, but it's because this is not a thing we had anything to do with.
No, that, but no, but I disagree, but I think you have an obligation to, um. You know, especially something that goes right to the core of how the town is run, I mean, this was an independent committee, they gave up with their recommendations, but the board of selectmen certainly should have an opinion on it.
I still make a point, and you know how I, I felt about the, I wanna say, gravity transparency is the wrong word, but I felt that at, at this point, having developed these things, it's, this needs to be out to the public.
Oh, yes.
The meetings aren't broadcast, they had a public forum which was not broadcast or recorded for distribution on the town website. That could lead to a bad perception of what this committee is doing, I feel, it's time for them to, I'm gonna say, bring it into the light of day. Okay, we've worked hard, we've met a lot of people, these are our recommendations, we'd like everybody's input. And that may be a discussion they've had, but I think at this point, with two months to go before a town meeting. Some public disclosure's gotta be out there, otherwise, as Craig said, you walk into town meeting, what's this?
There's substantial changes here that hasn't even represented to us, other than just being shown here.
Yeah, like, there's a little bit in the paper about it, you know, but, you're right.
You go back to last year's town meeting, but I believe the recording cut off halfway through Keith's speech of the.
And I, I think the original intent was to keep the board of selectmen out of these, so there was no influence.
Right, originally, yes.
Right, and now it's on the warrant, and like I said, I, you know, I would think that people would wanna know what you, what, what you think, or, you know, what you.
It's on the warrant, but I would like the government study committee to come to a board of selectmen's meeting to present their findings to the board of selectmen, not just throw it on the warrant.
That's fine.
That was a recommendation that I made.
One of, um.
Or else, I don't think anybody should support these without having them come.
Things don't go on the warrant without the selectmen approval, we, we are pretty generous that we feel any elected department automatically goes on there, so.
Yeah, no, we, I, 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 you know, I've heard the speech a hundred times, we felt we had an obligation to present this to the voters, cause such and such department asked for it, even though they may be idiots. But, you know, that, that last part's inferred in some of them, in some of the ones.
Roll the tape back.
The, um, you know, I, I look at the model of Mike Gorski getting a full-time fire department. He did a six-month rollout of information, because this was a major change in the way, the structure of the town. And that was a marvelous way, I mean, the school committee should have done that. That, that, that was the marketing job that they should have done and getting information out of them. But you're right, this is secret and it's two months away.
And I'm going to say it meant to be secret, I think there are good, some good people on the committee, it's just not the way I would have done it, that's all. So anyhow, you have these six things there, I think the board, I can't speak for the chairman, but I do a lot of it.
I'm used to that at home.
I think the board will.
I don't pay attention either.
So he's your work wife?
What, what? Yes, dear?
I think, yeah, we are going to explore ways to make a more public presentation with the government study committee.
Yeah, I don't, you know, listening to this, I don't think our advisory's public hearing will be adequate to address all of these issues.
Not at 8:30, by the time you're done with the other stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
For all 15 people that show up.
Yeah, but at least this one's broadcast.
Did I try and say something earlier?
No, no, I, I mean, I was part of the, part of the committee, and they worked hard. The initial was just a report, remember that, so they've gone above and beyond, if you will, by trying to implement some of these recommendations or articles, if you will. Their initial thing was, their, their initial was just a report that was due back to the townspeople. So, um, you need to give them credit, they've gone above and beyond. I was not a voting member, okay, I'm just ex officiado, and, um, there was a young group of people. So I think they did a good job, and I would say that, I mean, recommendation was, these articles should have been vetted through the select board first.
John, you bring up a good point, I forgot about that, that this should have been maybe suggested as part of their report, and it would have been up for the board whether to bring them forward, you know.
That's okay, that's a good point, we live and learn every day. Every day is a school.
We live, I'm not sure if we are.
The board can also not accept them on the warrant.
I mean, it's within your discretion.
That's right.
Right.
It is.
I'm nervous about them going on the, the warrant, the, the lack of time.
Well, lack of vetting, I mean, you got the advisory committee, seeing them for the first time, not discussing with us, it could be, these are, here's an article for a report, they can do a 15-minute presentation, which suggested changes in the future and, true?
Yeah, I mean, what you said makes sense, have them come in and talk to the selectmen, you know, get them on.
Right now, I think our plan tonight is to close the warrant, doesn't mean we're taking things out, we're just not accepting new articles. We at any time can modify the articles that are on the warrant at this point.
And the rest of these are just basically boilerplate.
Usual stuff.
You know.
Uh, we did, yes, yeah, in the 11 range again.
11,000 and some change.
Um, I know Don mentioned the, the town election warrant, Brian is still wrong, the people at the end, the cemetery commissioner is still up, they have one, two, and a three.
They have to be a one, one for one year, one for two, one for three. I don't know if anyone's running, but.
We're going to write them all in, so.
There you go.
That's an option.
Done that before.
Need to know, yeah, right.
Lucky by two votes, you're in.
I have to say, Julie Whitman, I'm not sure how many she got for the write-in for last year, but I'm going to say it was under five.
Is she on the board?
Harkin Rec.
Harkin Rec?
Which is great to see something like that, yeah.
She used to play soccer with my daughter.
I know, she was in Pat's class.
Yes, sir. There really should be an article to transfer money out of stabilization.
As a boilerplate, always.
As a boilerplate, yeah, we missed that one last time. Yeah, yeah, we really need to be able to go in or out as, as necessary. And that's a two, you know, that's just a two-thirds vote to take money out, so.
If needed.
If you go back three or four years, you'll see it on the bottom.
Just to get out of the pretty one.
Yeah. So, did you all have a good time?
Oh, well. We're all going out for beers.
Don signed the one-day license, you could just, you know, check this.
You know, one-day license issued, you need one?
But not together.
Really?
Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
That was very helpful. Thank you all.
A lot of moving parts.
Are we going back to the Melville one?
Indeed.
All right.
I can make over the other thing.
Yeah.
It's on another position.
So we got no Zoom operator?
We got no Zoom operator, we got no clerk.
No Pilates for you this week, Maureen.
Scared her off. Okay.
Find somebody, let us know.
Thank you, guys. See you. Well, we got Thornton Burgess' assessment.
Yeah, so basically, I think we got the quote from Time Bond, uh, seemed decent, I just wonder now with the timing, is this something we should look at in the fall, maybe a free cash quick run? We see a pretty tight budget here.
We get a lot of.
We don't have the, we don't have the urgency with what's happening at the school this week.
It's going to happen now.
There's no urgency on this.
But I still would like to know, I still think it's something, yeah.
You should know.
Right.
Maybe it's a, it's a fall, let's put it off to the fall.
Here's the thing, let, let Brian shake the trees, maybe a grant comes along.
Yeah.
We get enough of it, we can always say, oh, you need 5,000, the match of grant.
Maybe one of the community compact.
Right, something, right.
I have a couple ideas.
Awesome.
So I think we need to reach back out to Craig and Yvonne and say thank you, and Peter probably also oversaw that, and thank you, we're going to take a little pause in this right now, but.
Yeah, let's.
But we want to keep you.
We, we want to keep moving forward, but it's looking like a fall project.
It's a funding thing at this point, right.
Uh, both to close the warrant.
I'll make that motion, so this just.
Those we can always re-up.
No more new.
We, we can go through and still pull things off if we choose.
No more new.
No more new warrants, right.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Food permits.
One thing before on the warrant, though, I mentioned it's closed, we do need to, no, I mentioned it's warned, we do need to look at that calendar.
I had to.
No, we need to look at that calendar for the warrant, et cetera, posting times.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and let's get that written out, so we know that by this date, we need to have it on the board, the advisory meeting has to be posted and stuff like that.
To two weeks and.
It's a two-week thing, the one-week thing, those things, okay? So food permits, shockingly enough, there's still some more for the babes for a cause.
Just one this week.
And it is sweet babu, which is what Craig says all the time at home.
Is that Aladdin? Babu?
Sweet babu. And I don't know what they do. But they must sell food of some sort, anyhow, they'd like to be up at the starting gate on March 23rd with everybody else, which is sold out, I believe I saw on, on Facebook.
Did you get your tickets?
Whoa.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we anticipate that's the last one, but we do have next week, I guess, two, one is the, oh, no, no.
Uh, selectmen reports.
Well. We had the building committee, well, no, we don't meet till next week, so with this information going back to them, and, you know, that'll be the direction going forward. Obviously, you know, we have the forum this Thursday at the senior center at 6 o'clock. It'd be nice to see as much support as possible, there will be a second one, Craig. I think we set a date sometime in April at this point, another forum at the senior center. Uh, we'll use what we learned from this one to target the next one, kind of like what we did, you know, fiber, okay? What questions weren't answered, let's bring them forward. That'll be available on Zoom as well, I know, Don, we have a potential, you know, budget discussion that night at the library, I Ron, whatever, so.
That's this one, the 5 o'clock one, right here, the little note?
No, it's the next one, no, it's the Monday one. No, the, no.
Oh, you're the one this week?
This week is 6:30, 6:30.
There will not be attendance for this next one.
And then the following Monday is 5 o'clock.
And so we're going to meet on Tuesday next week. Okay?
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report, Todd administrator report.
Sure, couple things, we got the cable license.
Oh, quick, I'm sorry, so anybody watching, we need a Zoom operator for your meeting, basically, are you going for the ConCon meeting Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Don has tried Zoom, it's not pretty, so we need somebody to help him out.
Ever seen that lawyer one where he's coming on, he's dressed as a cat, and he's like, oh, my daughter was using Zoom before that, and, you know, he's in a legal thing, he's got the, the ears on and everything like that, it was a meeting.
I did see the one where the guy is doing a presentation for Brexit, and all of a sudden his little girl wheels in behind him, and the maid is on the floor trying to grab her back out the door. So, anyhow.
Go ahead.
What are you doing Wednesday night?
Busy.
Good answer.
Ted?
I guess I can't help.
So cable license agreement, that was signed, um, Sa- Saturday. Um, and that was shipped off to Char, Charter, so we're waiting to close this one up. Um, and accordingly, we, the town received a $5,000 grant from Charter to support the senior center and provide 15 tablets for the senior center, so if we enter, you know, agreement, short-term agreements, we'll get more stuff every time. Every agreement will give us more stuff.
All right, so we're changing to a one-year grant.
We should.
So we submitted, Brian, we submitted our assigned portion, did they acknowledge receipt and sign theirs portion?
They signed it in advance, yeah.
Oh, they signed it in advance?
Yeah. They signed it in advance, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they were waiting and then.
Stealth edits, but that's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, probably long-term, it, it, not substantial, but it's maybe a bit of a larger attitude or.
Cross that bridge.
Method of business when it comes to small towns.